Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting of Putnam Valley School Board of March 9th, 2017. Let's begin by rising and saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And before we begin the meeting, I want to extend our congratulations and good luck to the class of 2018 who are right below us hosting a fundraiser with the Harlem Wizards. So if you hear screeching and cheering and joy, it's coming from the gym, not necessarily the board meeting. And let's begin with a resolution to approve the minutes of the work session business meeting of February 16th, 2017 and the business meeting of February 23rd, 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this moves us right into our presentations. And I believe we're still in our budget presentations, correct Dr. Wells?
Yes, we're going to start this evening with a presentation by Mike Lee. It's the last of the department presentations and then we will have the summary budget presentation by Mrs. Figarilla.
Okay, all right. So, building a foundation for the future, I actually started last year's presentation just like this, the same slide actually, except for the year, because I truly believe this is what we do here, building a foundation for the future. But I've got a question for you guys. Can we build a foundation on or in a cloud? Can we do that? That's important to think about because one of the largest initiatives we did this year was to integrate our workflow into Google Everything. That means that our staff and our teachers have all been trained on how to use Google's email, calendar, Drive, Docs, Contacts, Hangout, Google Classroom. Now, all of these G Suite tools are designed to work together as one ecosystem to try to improve communications and I think that's what we've done. By and large, I hear the feedback is extremely positive. People like how each of these tools work together seamlessly because again, it is one ecosystem. Now what else have we done this year? Well, starting next week, we've got a Chromebook pilot that's coming out. We've got 90 Chromebooks and we're putting them into select 5th grade classrooms. Now, why are we doing that? Well, because we just want to explore the possibilities. We want to see what these Chromebooks could do if we push them to the limit. Document creation, emails, how it integrates with Google Classroom, if the kids could do real research on them. We've also got iPads in K-2. As you can see, that person's using a Tiggly app. It's kind of cool because you have these manipulatives that you could place on the screen and really helps the kids out. They also have Smarty Ants and Wixi, among others. I mean, we've got a ton of apps for the iPads. Now, who are these kids? Well, I'll tell you, these are the kids, or some of the kids, in the high school tech corps. What do they do? They do hardware and software support for the kids, for the teachers during the day. So they pretty much augment our tech team and they're mentored by Dan Mahoney. And so far, I hear they've been extremely, they've been extremely helpful, they're, you know, really good. Oh, something I should add to, oh, no, I'll add to this one. So our district app actually has now over 1,500 users. People probably like the instant push notifications because maybe we'll get some snow tomorrow. The standard teacher splash pages are now complete and we're just working together, it's online now, but happy to report that they're all actually done. What else did we do this year? We upgraded the server storage, we got faster and more redundant systems, we installed additional security cameras district-wide, and we upgraded the elementary school library automation system. And something else that I should have put up there is we also implemented the anonymous alert system. Now, we're also supporting literacy because we are all about education. And one of the things that we're engaging in is a book share program. Now, what does that do? Well, the book share program, it's a program where people who have difficulties reading in print, they could get their resource online and if they've got, say, a Braille reader, they could read the book in Braille. You know, it could also read the books back to them. And we're also exploring the read and write extensions for Google Chrome, which, as you can see, provides text-to-speech translator and practice reading aloud features within Google Documents. Okay, so, as always, our instructional technology plan, the purpose is to provide a safe environment with adequate facilities and equipment that will support instruction and learning. So the staffing for next year looks pretty much the same as it does for this year, but as you'll see, I highlighted something in yellow. What we want to do is we want to add one BOSI's computer specialist to bring the total FTE up to 1.0 FTE. Currently, we subscribe to .8 FTE. Now, you may be wondering, but why do we want to do this? Well, there's a new BOSI's IT support structure. As we know, BOSI's stands for the Board of Cooperative Educational Services and cooperative is supposed to mean sharing. So, the Office of the State Controller says that IT staff that is assigned to a district full-time, that doesn't equal sharing. So they came up with the 60/40 rule. So that says that a BOSI's tech can only work in a district 60% of their time. So then our current tech who's here will have to be reduced to three days. Now, why would we want a second tech then for two days instead of just that one? Well, this way he could integrate, he or she could integrate with our systems more effectively and they could assimilate better into our culture. Because basically, if you have them for one day, you know, it's really hard for them, for the teachers and the students, they get to know them and it's hard for them to get to know the teachers and the students. Essentially then, what I'm saying is, we want to, oop, I went too far. Okay, we want to turn them into a Borg. Okay. So, the overview of expenses, this is pretty much what we spend our money on annually. There's one new item that we'd like to do and that's upgrade the TV studio. This way, we could bring it up to the current broadcast standards for television and web Of course, we also have our regular expenses. And this is the IPA for this year. As you can see, we're planning on a combination of MacBook Pros and Chromebooks. We don't know the quantities yet because we're not sure how the Chromebook part of it will pan out, we're just starting that next week. The impact to the budget however, is predicted to be $83,000. And as you could see, for kids who find the Chromebook is perfect for what they do, you could realize quite a savings there per device. Okay, so now, onto the smart schools bond part. If you remember last year, I introduced this and Putnam Valley was allocated 915, oh wait, what's this?
It's the elephant in the room.
I can't seem to get rid of this. I guess that means I have to address the elephant in the room. The elephant basically is that we haven't heard anything from the state. Since we presented last year, our plan has been in financial review, which means that they approved pretty much everything about the plan and they're looking at the finances and there it has stayed. The good news is, is that we're clumped in with a group of schools who submitted at the same time and they have not advanced either. There was supposed to be a meeting about a week or two weeks ago and the meeting didn't happen. So, if we get any more updates on this, we'll certainly let you know, but currently, there's really no news as to when this will further progress. If you recall though, what we wanted to do was focus on upgrading our network infrastructure. Now, because of the age of some of our server equipment, we actually had to go ahead and complete one of these items on our own and that's increase server and storage capacity and capability. We had to do that because we couldn't risk any downtime. Hopefully, we could get all the rest of the list done though, with the smart schools money. If you forgot, this is how much we applied for and the allocations. We were able to do on our own however, building an active learning lab in the middle school and as you can see, the kids are really using it. And I also brought up a newspaper article just from, what, a week ago or so, where it says the kids, Putnam Valley kids, design plans for the taconic overpass. See, so the kids have really taken to this and they're using it. Now, do you remember the question that I asked in the beginning? Can you build a foundation on or in a cloud? I would probably say no, you can't. But we're doing so much more than that. I mean, as you just saw, we built on our own that active learning lab, the kids are using it. You should see how their faces light up when they're using this. I mean, when I visited them this day, they were all engaged in building their overpasses and here, here, the kids are literally building a foundation for the future, right? Overpass, they're building it. So, because of the foundation that the kids are actually building here on the ground, I know that our foundation could actually grow to that, far above the clouds. Thanks. Any questions?
Can you just tell more about the BOSI's piece? The change in the BOSI's on what we currently have versus what the new situation will be in and the roles will be different than they are currently?
Okay, the roles would be the same, but our current tech works here four days a week, so that represents 80% of his time. That's not going to be allowed anymore by the state. The state says, this person, and not just our person, like any BOSI's tech, can only work in a single district 60% of their time. So the maximum amount of time that a BOSI's tech could work in your district would be three days. After that, you have to get another BOSI's tech in. So there are a lot of schools who actually had as their primary support, I mean, I'm talking about everybody, five days a week. And so, those districts are sort of scrambling around because if you could imagine if you had all of your building support, all of your network support, all of your IT people and you're used to them being here five days a week, now they could only be their maximum of three days a week and then you're going to have to have a whole new crew shuffle in to replace those people that are remaining too. So what we want to do is just add somebody else to cover the remaining two days of the week.
So we're cutting somebody down and adding a new person?
Well, we're not cutting, well, I mean, we're being, well, we're not given, we're not being given the choice to employ this person.
Right, so I mean, a person that works now four days a week will be working three days a week and then we're having another person, who has to be a different human person, to of those, the two empty days.
Yes, yep.
Thus having a full day.
Yeah.
Full week.
Mm-hmm.
But the carryover now, when you have some, on that one day that the BOSI's tech is not here, somebody in-house or somebody we have also covers that time, correct?
Yes, yeah.
So we will have then, on one day a week, redundancy?
Yeah, that's exactly it.
Could you just go over the switching of MacBooks to Chromebooks and that $300 savings and when, and do we have a plan to realize that savings throughout the school or what's the plan there?
Okay, well, it's not necessarily a MacBook to Chromebook switch, what it is is we're exploring maybe how many kids find that Chromebooks exactly meet their needs. Because we also recognize that there's a, there are population of kids who want to do more than what perhaps a Chromebook can offer. And so we're, we're kind of looking at supporting two systems at the moment.
So it's an opt-in to the Chromebook? I mean, aren't we gonna, if there's a $325 savings per student for them to move from a laptop to a Chromebook and we're supplying our, the bulk of our students with one of the, one or the other, should we not have more, a specific plan on how to, how to move more people into the Chromebook that don't need the laptop?
We should, we should, but that's exactly why we're starting our Chromebook pilot next week, so we could see how the students use them, what they like about it, what they don't like about it, and then, once we have that information, then we could form an even more comprehensive plan.
So you're piloting on, on elementary school students?
Middle school students.
Middle school students. One class or the whole grade?
Two classes, I believe.
Two classes, fifth grade. Just so I can do some quick math in my head, what is the number of students that we supply computers to now?
That would be 1,750, I believe.
See, I knew you'd have it, so, okay, thanks.
Yep.
I just have to go back to the BOSI's question only because the logic bothers me. So, the stipulation is on shared services as long as it's an individual. They have no problem with our sharing services to the point of an FTE, it just can't be the same body.
Can't be the same one person.
It doesn't make any sense, but that's fine.
They've argued as such as well, yeah.
Okay. I just.
It does give more, I guess it might allow more hiring for BOSI's somehow, because if you, you might not need, nobody's going to be able to have five, but they're going to be farming all these people who have five days now to other places, so there's going to be more.
It guarantees the sharing because no one person can have a full-time job. If you had five persons, five days allowed in one school, then essentially, that's an employee of that school.
Right, it makes it very clear that it's not an employee of the school, it is definitely BOSI's employee.
Yeah.
I don't think it's too big a jump, are there any districts that are coordinating that by saying they would use the same two people, one would do 60 in one school, 40 in another, and then the other person would be 60 in that school and 40 in the other, sort of two-school district sharing?
Yeah, BOSI's is trying to arrange agreements like that between districts who are geographically close to each other.
I mean, only, I think it would only benefit districts also to not have somebody five days because then you learn from what other districts have because they can bring that knowledge over from whatever the other district is, back and forth.
There is method to the madness.
Yep.
Could I also ask, Mike, that aid that's sort of sitting at the state level, I don't want to say vegetating because that would be accurate, but it's.
Collecting interest.
Exactly.
That, that's sitting there, we did part of that, we did part of what we applied for, you said?
We had to.
We had to.
Yeah.
So what will happen then if that finally moves? Will that be omitted from our application or will we get that reimbursed? What do you think?
It won't be omitted from our application. What happens is, is we still have that money available to us to use for something else.
Okay, all right.
Right, so when we do have to do it again, they say the money never expires. So, when the, when the time comes for us to have to do it again, which we will, then we could use that money.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
I mean, on the Chromebook thing, there's, I mean, I could see and argue both for and against, like, are we a Mac school or are we not a Mac school number one? And does that make a difference? Is there a benefit to learning Windows? Because we have, you know, a generation of students, if they don't have them at home and they're not working outside of, you know, they don't, Windows is completely different. So, I mean, there's a benefit of cross-training in that. Question is, are the tools you can use in a Chromebook the same as what you can get from that? And do you need that or do you have a separate lab for those things that you might need?
I guess that's the argument for the pilot, to make sure that it makes sense before we go whole.
The question becomes though, is 5th grade, I mean, 5th grade's a great place to start and test, but it's not allowing high schoolers to see if that can satisfy their needs yet either because you can't base an entire district on what one grade or half of one grade can work. Because the needs of a 5th grader are very different than the needs of a junior student doing science research or editing for film or any of those things.
And their needs might change in one semester or one year to the next and if they're used to the Chromebook, switching back over to the Mac is going to, oh, but, but $300 per student is a big number times 1,750, right?
And the versatility for students is a good thing in some ways too because of, you know, what they'll need as they go out. Another, this is another reason why the focus for the Director of Learning and, you know, the instructional technology piece is so important. We need to really examine all of these decisions and from the perspective of the specialist involved in the instructional piece of technology.
Okay, good evening.
All right, Ms. Figarilla.
Going to move on to the, the entire budget that's going to be proposed for 2017-18 now that we've heard from all of the individual departments. So you'll see a lot of the conversations that have already gone on incorporated into the presentation. So we have our 2017-18 budget and we're going to talk about what's new, program and district initiatives and preparing our students for the future. Just a reminder that the budget is not just a collection of numbers, but it is an expression of our values and aspirations. So in, the program and district initiatives included in this budget proposal have a number of district-wide initiatives. We have the world language expansion at the middle school to Mandarin Chinese, the children's environmental literacy foundation, which is called, also known as SELF. This will be teaching the students different economic, social, and environmental systems and how they work, all the way from K through 12. And this is directly tied into our energy performance project that will be taking place once it gets approved by the state over the next, I would say, year, year and a half, could be a little longer depending on their approval time. We're going to be continuing our innovative designs in education, K through 12, the international baccalaureate program startup for the high school and the actual implementation date for that, as far as the students are concerned, is 2019-20 because the training and the proper, the proper training for our staff and administrators will be going on, starting in July and that's when they'll be ready to start that up. And it's just for the 11th and 12th grade as far as the proposal goes. There is our active learning lab at the middle school where we'll be having some additions in science and journalism. Anticipated additional staff needed this year, 2.4 teaching positions at the high school and three at the middle school. Possibly a teaching assistant and another monitor to support and assist lowering class sizes. That's what these teaching positions are and the, mainly the assistant and the school monitor would be for, specifically for the learning lab at the, at the middle school at this point, if needed. And the other staff addition would be the Director of Learning and Innovative Educational Opportunities for all students K through 12. We're also looking at one additional cleaner position at the high school in conjunction with the new schedule for the high school and the lunch periods changing. So how are we balancing the costs of the new initiatives and staying within the tax cap? So we have a reduction in some New York State retirement contribution rates, mainly the teacher's retirement contribution rate is, has been lowered. We have eight retiring teachers, we have seven retiring non-teaching staff and they will help, these things will help pay for some of the program changes that I just spoke about. The proposed budget, you'll see, also uses some available fund balance that helps to balance our revenues. We'll be using our debt service reserve, part of that fund balance to meet the obligation of the debt payments that we have, which we have every year. The local retirement systems reserve will help supplement the contributions for our non-teaching staff and the use of our benefit and liability reserve, which is going to be our biggest contribution towards the revenues in our budget this year because of the number of people we have retiring. Some of that reserve will need to get, you know, removed from that fund balance in order to bring it to the level it needs to be at the liability of the current or the remaining employees. So the use of the fund balance, even though we're lowering in overall, we have in reserve but we'll be using a benefit to supplement our instructional program and budget again to reduce the class size and enhance our programs. So despite the increased CPI of 1.26%, this is the allowable, part of the formula that's in the allowable tax levy cap that will stay, it'll cause the tax levy to stay almost flat. And due to a decreased tax levy base over the last two years and our declining debt that has kind of caused it to go flat, so even though we've had a CPI increase because of those other two factors, you're not going to see an increase in the levy by a whole lot. The 2017-18 proposed tax levy is a decrease over the prior year's proposed levy. This is where it gets a little complicated. We proposed a tax levy last year and then we voted on that tax levy, on the budget and the tax levy that was in the voted-on budget passed and in the fall, in the summer, when we got our final figures for state aid and saw what our surplus was at the end of last year's spending, the Board elected to lower the tax levy an additional $370,000. So therefore, bringing the original voted-on budget proposed tax levy down 370,000. So when you look at the newly proposed tax levy, it, it's an increase over last year of $300,857. However, the levy remains lower than it was three years ago in 2014-15. As I go through more slides, that will come up again and we'll, so everyone understands it, I want it to be clear. So we're balancing costs of the new initiatives and staying within the tax cap like I mentioned. There's an increase in our health premiums by 8%. This is a big impact on our budget this year, by $400,000 plus, depending on who comes and goes from the health plan. We have people dropping in and out of that all the time. There are new rules, there are new health rules and there's a lot, all of the districts are experiencing these higher premiums. We have natural increases in contractual bargaining unit contracts and cost increases for vendor contracts, materials, and supplies. In transportation, in the area of transportation, as the district continues to serve particular transportation needs on its own, outside of the contractor, we're proposing the financing of two four-wheel drive vehicles. Mr. Bellino spoke about that at his presentation and because the state allows schools to utilize a five-year note for purchasing vehicles, that's the route that I would propose that week out. It doesn't really cost the district any more than buying them outright, it's, and we get to stretch it over the five years, so I think that's a more even way to make the purchase. Then I wanted to go over our enrollment projections again before we go over all the figures. So we have our 2016-17, if I can move this over a little, I guess not, 2016-17 enrollment of 1,700. Then we do a three-year average and a five-year average to kind of come to some sort of conclusion as to how it's going to turn out next year and we use our live birth rates to do that calculation. And so what we're looking at is these differences in the, in the grade levels. And you can see, it's part. And you can see, it's hard to see, but I had to fit it all on the screen. I don't know if I can do this. So in the kindergarten, we might have a number between 11 and 14 additional children. And then in the first grade, we'll have less, 24 to 25. So that's because our kindergarten, I'm sorry, the first grade is going to have an additional 24 to 25. Because our kindergarten, if you remember, last year had a large influx of children coming in, and so they'll, they'll now be first graders. And, and so forth. So in second grade, we expect an additional 19, between 19 and 21. In third grade, less by one to three. And in fifth, in fourth grade, less by 17. In fifth grade, between 15 and 17 more children. In sixth grade, less 13. I'm having a hard time seeing it, I hope not everybody is. And in seventh grade, less 10 children. Anyway, it averages over all of the grade levels about less 20 children overall for this coming year. So the changes in staff, I'll go over those. We have 2.4 teachers proposed at the high school. We have a science, 1.0 science teacher in order to reduce class size. Another full-time teacher for ELA slash film will be, it'll be for the coordination of current teachers for additional sections of the Achievement Center and to allow for nine periods. Also, math, journalism, and film electives. That's what that 1.0 would cover. A .4 in Spanish that will be shared with the middle school. So the teacher would be a 1.0, but .4 of that teacher, in other words, two periods of the day would be at the middle school. We have a 12-month office assistant retiring in the high school office that will become a 10, a school calendar position. That means they'll only be here on the days that the kids are here. At the middle school, the three teachers that are proposed are the other, the .6 in Spanish that I mentioned, so that'll be the other periods of the day they will share. The .4 is in home and careers, which is a, I'm calling it home and careers, I think it's been called a couple of different things throughout the presentations.
Family and consumer sciences.
So I should've changed the name of that, but family and consumer sciences is now what they're called. And it's a, it's a mandated program by the state, so that is something we need to incorporate at the, at the middle school. .6 in social studies addresses class size. .8 in ELA, reading, writing, addition, additional general ed lab one time a week. And I'm sure I, I can't speak to that as much as, as it's been explained by someone else, so I'm just gonna tell you what it is. A .6 special education reading teacher also shared with the high school. In addition to those two buildings, there is the Director of Learning and Innovative Educational Opportunities we've been speaking about for K through 12. A teaching assistant and a monitor possibly at the middle school for the active learning lab. A full-time cleaner at the high school. And again, the replacement of the eight retiring teachers and seven retiring non-teaching positions. So those will be our changes, proposed changes in staff for next year. The, okay, now I'll go over the different parts of the budget. So we have four categories of revenue when we talk about the budget. Our first category being school taxes. So they're driven by the formula, also known as the tax cap. And the CPI or the Consumer Price Index used to develop the tax cap for 2017-18 is 1.26 percent. The formula yields an increase in our tax levy of $300,857. And there's an increase because the taxes were lowered prior to the bills being issued last year. So that's the, the difference between those two figures. The state aid, about 50 percent of our state aid is expenditure-driven, 50 percent is formula-driven. District statewide are being, are helping, are hoping for the reinstatement of foundation aid. Legislators are asking for the return of foundation aid in its entirety. They're trying to come up with some formulas to only give partial amounts back to the school districts. There's been a lot of letters going around that are gonna be sent to legislators trying to recoup the additional amount. So when I say the 50 percent of our aid is expenditure-driven, it just means exactly that. What we spend in, for instance, at BOSI's, when we do our, spend money on our BOSI's programs, the following year, we get that back, but it's in the form of revenue. It doesn't get credited back to our expenditures, it goes into our revenue. And that's not all of the expenses we have with BOSI's. Only, there are some things that are not. There are only a certain amount of personnel costs that we can get back. But for the most part, we get a good amount of state aid back on the BOSI's costs. The other types of revenue are, sources are more unpredictable, the interest earnings, the added district tuitions, our building use, and some refunds of prior year's expenses. I'm sorry, this is so dark. Then we have our appropriated fund balance. We have our, like I mentioned earlier, it's called the Employee Benefit and Liability Reserve. This reserve will be adjusted for the 15 retiring employees. We have the Employees Retirement Reserve, which supports the district retirement contributions for the non-teaching staff. And we have our Tax Surchori Reserve that's adjusted by the amount of claims that we have on hand at the end of the year. So those are the main description of the four categories of revenue that we have to budget for. The expenditure categories are general support, which includes our district and business functions, changes in personnel and technology needs. Our instruction portion, which is the, while the retirements can help reduce salaries for future years, there are the labor contract considerations that will increase. They have higher BOSI's program costs. And also, due to the new health insurance increase and premiums, those costs will go up for those employees and people that come from BOSI's to administer those programs, such as the special ed programs and the technology programs. Whenever we get someone from them, their costs for health insurance go up as well. We have 5.4 new teaching positions and the Director of Learning. So all that falls under the instruction portion of the budget. The transportation portion of the budget increases about 1 percent in the home-to-school contract that we have with our vendor. And we also could be impacted by a piloted mid-year change to a later start time at the high school in the area of transportation. The benefits area, again, health premiums increasing by 8, 8 percent. Employer contributions rate reduced by the New York State Retirement System. Cost considerations for Affordable Care Act impacts. And additional salary impact on the employer payroll taxes because of the increases in the, in the health. So this is what it looks like. We have proposed revenue for 2017-18. The appropriated fund balance, so if you look at the, one, two, three, fifth column over, that will be our proposed budget for 2017-18. We have the appropriated fund balance portion of the revenues at 1.6 million. Then we have our budget-to-budget change in the dollars from last year to this year, and the percent change. So these other columns are there for information only. What you will see, again, is the real property tax levy of, in 2016-17, the current year, adopted at $35,844,964. The actual levy that was reduced after the vote to $35,474,964. Making the increase after the cap is applied in the formula of $300,857. So we have a .84 percent increase in the tax levy. The local non-tax sources, $695,000, an increase of $140,000. Our state and federal sources, which is the aid, I think this thing just ran out. State and federal sources of aid have increased about $365,000. Those final figures are also not in yet, won't be until just prior to the budget, as usual. And our total budget, excuse me, $48,544,139. An increase of $600,877. And if you notice, the budget-to-budget difference in the percentage is 1.25 percent, which is right about where our tax cap is, 1.26. Then we have our proposed expenditures. And again, general support area of the budget, about $39,000 higher than last year. Instruction, 1.2 million with the additions of the initiatives. And again, the natural increases in contracts and so forth. Transportation, we are seeing a decrease of $123,000. Our benefits and what they call undistributed expenses, which is all of our payroll tax, payroll benefits such as health, retirement contributions, workers' compensation, unemployment, that'll be down $549,000. And that also includes the debt service payments, which some of it is coming from a reserve that we're, that we have in, in our debt service fund. So you see the decrease there because we're using some of that. And our total, again, 48,544,139. So I created this chart just to show the budgets over the last four years, well, last three years, excuse me. We have our budget 14-15, 15-16, 16-17, and 17-18, which is coming in lower than it was three years ago. The tax levy, again, lower than three years ago. And the use of our fund balance, not lower, higher. We're being more reliant on the fund balance. We have the State Comptroller's Report that came out last year, mentioning that school districts need to be more reliant on some of their fund balance. They'd like to see that. So that's exactly what the proposal is contain, has, you know, has in it, more use of our fund balance. So then we also have something we've all been talking about, which is the Energy Performance Contract. So in addition to voting on the budget this year, we're gonna have a propos, a proposition, excuse me, on the ballot for the Energy Performance Contract. If, we have a 10 percent additional aid incentive of around $600,000 coming our way if the proposition is approved via the voting process. Again, the EPC project is reducing our carbon footprint. And the Energy Performance Contract will allow the district to upgrade the facilities with more energy-efficient equipment while financing the new equipment with the guaranteed energy savings. That means no cost to the taxpayer. People will, I'm sorry, the project will generate some of these things here, solar vol, photovoltaic, rooftop systems in the middle school, high school, and elementary school bus garage roof. New window upgrades in the elementary school in the 1962 and 1935 wings. New LED lighting throughout the district. A geothermal heat pump system at the elementary school to significantly reduce our reliance on oil. Everyone knows the middle school and high school campuses already have the geothermal heat. We do not use any oil on the campus here at the high school and middle school. The upgrade of building management systems, that means our temperature monitoring. So we have a computer system that monitors the temperatures in the building and keeps us at our savings where we hope they will be to, where we need them to be, where we need to keep them to realize the savings. So the project will generate over $384,000 in annual savings, which, as mentioned previously, will pay for the project costs over a 15-year finance term. This means no cost to the district taxpayer. As an incentive, the district will receive an additional 10 percent in aid if the voters approve the proposition at the vote in May. So that is really the conclusion. I have dates for you here. We're gonna be voting on a budget, we're gonna be voting on a trustee, and the proposition for the Energy Performance Contract. When, May 16th, at the Putnam Valley Elementary School, between 6:00 and 9:00 p.m. The absentee ballots are available at the district office or online. The completed ballots must be received by the clerk by 5:00 p.m. on May 16th to be counted. And the trustees, there will be one position open on the board. Monday, April 17th is the last date to submit a petition to run for the board. And there will be two propositions on the ballot, the general operating budget and the Energy Performance Contract. And now I need to know if you have any questions or discussion?
I'm nodding my head.
Sure, Joe's gonna have a dozen, so let me get mine in first.
I'm sorry, it was very long, but there's a lot in the budget, there's a lot involved in creating the budget.
It needs to be, no, that's great. Just, just one, one quick one. Does this budget reflect the added $120,000 for buses in the second half?
It does, for the second half of the year.
Which still reflects an overall decrease in transportation cost from last year.
It does.
Okay.
We have some retiring people, we have, there's a couple of different, and the fuel costs have decreased somewhat.
The additional staff that was talked about for the high school and the middle school, this is in addition to the replacements of the retirees, correct?
Correct, that's in addition.
Some clarification, like, on slide three, you have the world language expansion at the middle school, Mandarin Chinese, but there was no person.
No.
Right, so the person doesn't exist in our district. The person exists at the location, the BOSI's location.
Okay, so that's, okay.
So we don't pay a full dollar, we pay them fees. So we're paying a BOSI's fee for all our other BOSI's programs.
Fine, okay.
And with that remote learning, will, once we know how many parents or children opt into the Chinese program, that may affect the need for the additional Spanish in the middle school, correct?
Could, they will still need it in the eighth grade, but the seventh grade would be impacted because it's its own.
Can we stay with that for a second? Because I guess it really becomes a question of need. We have, from what I, your enrollment numbers show, we have approximately 20 less students next year in district. Seven more in the, I did, I did the math, seven more in the middle school. But we're now proposing three less teach, more teachers. Now, one is the new family and consumer science that we've been out of compliance, we have to do it. But I question, do we need all three? Do we have to lower every class size, our kids are functioning?
Well, this has been a question, this has been a question by the board that we've received regarding numbers of 29, 28 in 29, and so on, in our middle school, social studies, and middle school language. And also in our science, some of our science classes, particularly at the high school. So this is actually in response to questions about that, about those high numbers that we've had for a number of years. And I think there was a long time that the district was, you know, resisting any kinds of increases, but it, there's a price to pay, you know, when you have high class sizes.
So the 28, 29 goes to 23, 24?
Yes.
Is that what we're looking at, the real numbers?
Yeah, 24, yes, 23, 24, 25, max.
I know you don't want to be held to a specific number.
Right, I don't have it there. But, but it is, yes.
But, but that's, but that's.
Those are, those are high numbers.
And they go back 10 or 12 years. And we've had those high numbers, especially in social studies, not always in Spanish, but in social studies.
Right, right. Spanish has been 29, which is impossible, I don't know how. And you rely a lot then on the technology to teach, and you don't have much conversation because you just have too many students. So the, the other piece is the reading and writing addition, and the idea that when we had the visit from school to watch, you know, and we look at our program and we see that for the seventh and eighth grade, they only have 40 minutes of reading and writing, you know, the ELA, and we wanna push on, you know, literacy and on writing. We are looking to include the same number of, or similar number of minutes to the fifth and sixth grade. And similar to actually what the high school introduced a few years ago with that lab that meets a couple of times a week for writing. So these changes are really in re- So these changes are really in response to needs that have been there for a while and we have limited the response to that over years.
And the big number of retirees allowed us to finally get it done this year.
It allows us to do a little bit more. It allows us to do a little more. And also, the reserves were questioned and I think using them for the purpose of trying to improve the instructional environment is appropriate, or at least some of that. And we could use some of the reserves that we actually had to reduce because we don't have the retiree numbers, the EBLR, for example. So you really do have to reduce that one because you don't have the justification for that. And the tax cap, we've, we've been very frugal in that and it's still frugal, but you can't go too far because if you go too far, you will reduce your capacity to really have any flexibility. You can't keep reducing your, your tax cap and your budget because then you can't be flexible at all. It becomes then a burden because you see what happened last year. You reduced the tax levy, which was really wonderful that we had the money to do that, but the following year you can't possibly be lower than that or you would be, you would have to start to reduce many of your opportunities.
Which was a lot of the conversation we had last year about doing it earlier.
And the year before.
And I think, I think at this point you have to be cautious in continuing to do that because you end up with a situation where you're really limiting your resources and your opportunities.
Can I ask some clarification about, because there's so many point this percent for that percent? So, and you know, I think I usually get it. So the overall tax cap, and I guess I'm on the slide that says propose, propose revenue 2017, 18?
Okay.
There we go. So our allowable formula tax increase is 1.26.
That's correct.
Okay. How is that, is that number, is that term tax increase different from the tax levy?
Yes, the 1.26% is just part of the formula. So at some point in the formula, without going over all the little calculations that are involved, the levy gets increased by 1.26%.
Is the mo, right.
Right, and then there's some things subtracted and some things added to it by formula, which, you know, have to be. And, but overall, we've been seeing CPI changes of under 1%. So, I mean, you know, the changes in the CPI really drive the formula overall, so I would say that that factor is the, is the most, has the most impact on the formula.
So on this page where it says our overall increase is 1.25%.
In the budget.
In the budget. But the actual tax levy increase is 0.84%.
It's 0.84.
So we're still under the overall formula in the budget.
Right.
But we're actually not asking the taxpayers for 1.25% more.
Right, we're actually giving back money by using some of the.
11% of our fund.
Of the fund balance. In, in not, in, right, exactly. It's not, it's not lowering the levy per se for this current year, but it's giving back money that they've paid in prior years by utilizing the fund balance that we have on hand.
And remind me again, I know you said it, the local non-tax sources include, like an example?
Interest. District for, district for, I mean tuition for added district students, some refunds of prior years expense. It's like the other category miscellaneous.
And that can fluctuate.
That's a big increase.
Bosse's refunds. Yeah, Bosse's refunds, things like that.
Okay, great.
Jill, not for now, but I'd like to, I'd love to see a few years prior than, than 2014 and maybe graph it out. You know, just, just to illustrate, you know, what we've been able to do here in Putnam Valley in the last, you know, really seven, seven years or so where we've really maintained very wonderful fiscal discipline and, and really took the taxpayers' desire to, to keep their taxes under control in mind. And, and I think if we could illustrate that, I think would look nice on a graph, especially compared to CPI.
Right, there's only so much space for these.
I know, I want to.
So the graph, no, I like the idea of a graph as well. And the, you know, the thing is, I started at a point where I started and I'll take it back a few years so everybody can see that, yep.
At very least, from when the tax cap started, which would have been in 2010, 11?
We lowered, we went down before the tax cap came into play.
Right, we went under the two, right, we were, we anticipated the 2%.
We anticipated, but we did it before we had to by a year or two, right?
I just find it extraordinary that the overall budget is, actually, that's not true. The, not the overall budget, the overall budget is only, it's less than, a million less than 2014, a million more than 2014, but the actual tax, property tax we're collecting is less than the 2014, 15 budget. And that's including, you know, three years of contractual obligations, three years of, you know, costs. So that's, that's extraordinary.
And 2015, 16, and last year until we gave, until we changed our, after we got the additional aids, we changed the number that went back at the end. So it's, you know, four years, still solid number comparatively. But yeah, I think a graph that would show each one of these lines spread out with different colors.
I'd like to see it 10 years back and, and to see what, what the tax, the tax levy looks like in relation to CPI because that's a real dollar figure, right? So it would be not just the, the raw number, but also compared to the, the consumer price index, it would be interesting, illustrative.
I have a few questions and I don't know if you actually have an answer on this or not. You have in here that the IB would be for 1920. I'm imagining that's kind of fluid. It might be 2021 or 2122 depending on the application process, right?
Right. That would be the earliest date that I think it could be.
Because that's three years out as opposed to the five years out, which is, okay.
Yep.
And the enrollment projection you have in there, that's the projection, that's not based on registrations or kindergarten, correct?
Correct.
And I want to remind everybody about the proposition that's on the ballot, the performance, energy performance contract. That vote does not determine if you go forward with the project or not, it just allows us to get an additional 10% in state aid. So it's, it's a, it's a vote to allow us to get additional money, not to say yay or nay on the project, correct?
Right, the, the approval of it through the voting process will yield the district an extra 10%. The project itself has permission to go through once the plans are approved.
By, by the state education.
Right, and by not approving it through the voting process, the district loses out on the opportunity of approximately $600,000 in aid.
Additionally.
So basically, the state is saying, you share this with your community, you let them know what you're doing, how you're saving, how you're planning on saving, educate your, your community members on energy performance contract, the, you know, reducing your carbon footprint and they'll give you an extra 10%.
Yeah, I just want to also just talk about actual voting. I think this is good civic practice to register and vote and realize how easy it is and, and get in the habit of doing it. And I think we should let those kids in our high school who are eligible, remind them as well, they can vote.
I think they do that in the social study, or they have historically done in the social studies classes.
They'll continue to do it.
And so time, I, you have it some way, somewhere, timeframe. We're approving the budget by what, on what board meeting date?
April, the first board meeting in April? We'd like to get it approved that evening in order to.
Get the spotlight out and all that information.
Again, get the budget newsletter prepared timely and the budget notice, the piece that they call the budget notice.
Yes.
That we're mandated to send out to everyone in the community. So it's in our best interest to get it adopted at that meeting on April 4th or 6th.
April 6th.
And, but the challenge with that is that the budget doesn't come until April 1st, so we might be pushed to the next meeting or a special meeting to.
You're talking about the state budget?
Yeah, the state budget. You know, we don't get the information on the new state runs until then and then we got to figure out what that does. And we always scramble around that time, but the 6th is a little earlier than usual, might be like the 10th or the 12th.
You can't be on, you can't, no later than the 21st, which is very late, but we have a meeting on the 18th as well.
But that may be a little late in terms of communication and the newsletter.
Yeah, so what we've been doing is sending out the newsletter electronically in the months prior to the budget. I know that we're ready to do that for a budget newsletter, that would be entirely up to everyone here. I need to send out that budget notice that I'm speaking about within a certain number of days prior to the budget voting.
Right.
But because of the turnaround time for the rest of the budget newsletter, that's where the time problem comes in.
My recommendation on that would be write whatever you can write and leave some of the things blank in case, and, and don't change a whole lot either as far as to the numbers, that way.
Be ready to.
It's ready to go and if the numbers change because of what the state does, we can just change some of those numbers. So as far as text, that's the time constraint, that's the time issue is coming up with text.
Yeah, that's, that's all done prior. So we can talk about that more at the next meeting, which I'm gonna, you know, go over some more of the budget again, but I'll have some more dates that are, that'll give us the outline of that so we can decide what we want to do.
And just, I think we've almost gotten, I don't want to say spoiled, but when I first was on the board, budgets from the state came in around May. Sometimes, sometimes they came in after our budget vote.
Yeah.
And often, they came in after our budget vote. It is nice that the last several years they have been around that April 1st.
Yeah, so there's no guarantee it's going to happen April 1st either.
Right, right. So, you know, we have in the past, historically, boards have had to make decisions about their budgets and vote on their budgets, not knowing what their state aid would be. So as we get closer, we'll see.
I guess the, the reason to piggyback on what Dave was saying, that we're presenting all these things and people are seeing these things, it, this allows the public a chance to give us some feedback on.
Exactly.
There's a lot of instructional improvements, I think, in this budget that affect class size, staffing, et cetera. So this would be nice to hear from the public of which ones really catch their eye and going to improve their, the situation if they have a student in the school or, or their school in general for all the, all the residents.
Absolutely. Okay, you know we're a mulling board, so we will obviously look at this and if we have questions, we'll send them to you.
Right, and that's, we'll review this again at the next meeting. I'll have, perhaps I'll have the 10 years of information.
And a pretty graph.
In a pretty graph.
Use some pretty colors. Get the art teachers.
And if there's anything else, obviously, you know, we'll do it then.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Next, as part of our continuing discussion of the later start process, there were several questions that came up that were very specific of concern to students and they had to do with the, the way we can balance athletics and clubs and manage those kinds of things that are very important to students with the later start process, which now is, you know, we are looking at a start of, you know, from 7:10 and we're looking at 7:40, which is a full half an hour. No, a full 40 minutes.
Forty minutes.
And.
7:50 then?
7:50, I'm sorry. Right. 7:50.
Getting your math straight there.
You're absolutely right. 7:50 start and then in the afternoon, I mean, it's not all that clear in the afternoon. I think we're talking about seven, about 2:35, but that's a little, it's about 2:35. And so there's a full period change in the morning and, and 7:35 in the afternoon, which is the time that the middle school gets out now.
Correct. Hello, everyone. So during this presentation, there's going to be a couple of different comparisons, timelines going horizontally, but then in order to really try to chart out and make it not too complicated, I did bullet out what would actually happen, all right? Because it's a little bit complicated visually, if you have any questions as we actually move through, by all means, just, you know, let me know and we can stop. If, if we were to go jumping back into the presentation, it might be a little bit.
Okay.
Overwhelming. All right, so I was asked to put together a little bit more specific and visual change as far as if we were to stick with a 2:34, 2:35 start for various athletic activities, both in the middle school and the high school. And then what would it look like for a 3:15 start, which would in essence gain that, what we're calling this 10th period timeframe, where we do a lot of different clubs and activities like that? Okay, so even.
So we're currently starting athletics at 2:35 now?
Approximately. Some 2:30, 2:35, 2:45, right in that timeframe, yes.
And Brian, what was that, the reason that we're looking at the, also an option of 3:15 because people were concerned about club time and perhaps putting those clubs, giving them a spot after school and giving them that 10th period? Is that why we're starting to look maybe at this 3:15?
Right, so, you know, it.
Because they'd be dismissed at 2:35.
That 40 minutes that we're moving has to go somewhere. You're either not going to have some things or it's going to look differently. So this is, this is going to be a little involved and I think there's going to be some definite decisions that, that need to eventually be made as far as, is this what we want specifically for middle school? Because right now, we start right after school for activities, sporting activities. And then we do have that window of later start for the high school, JV and varsity sports. So it's, it's going to be a little involved and there's a lot to it. By all means, stop me if you have any questions.
So our students would be theoretically dismissed at 2:35.
Correct.
From school, which is now when they're starting programs.
That, that was what I was given as the.
Right, so that's why you're proposing 3:15 at this point as a start time.
Correct. That, well, I'm not proposing anything. I'm charting out.
You're working with 3:15 as the number.
Charting out what it might look like depending on which direction you want to go.
That 45 minute.
Hang on to 10th period for everybody.
It's not a formal period, it's just.
It's that gap, that going home, get, you know, maybe having a snack, unwinding, whatever. Okay.
Okay.
Got it, sorry.
So for the fall season, this is just an example of the teams and the field spaces that we use. Okay, we're spread out quite a bit. Just for the sake of trying to keep the, the presentation a little bit simpler, when we have an activity that is, such as gymnastics, I didn't include it in the overall presentation. It's an off-campus merger sport, okay? Same with tennis, that's over at Peak Skill.
So it didn't infect our grounds?
Not our actual facilities here, correct? Yep. Okay, so for fall modified, typically, there's just a shift in time slightly. So we ship out boys and girls soccer, field hockey, we bus them to either the upper elementary school for both the soccer teams or the town park for field hockey. Cross-country stays on campus and volleyball is in the middle school gymnasium. So this would only be affected by just a time shift essentially. And again, middle school, you may or may not decide to actually continue to start at 2:34 or 3:15 depending.
Their dismissal time is not changing.
Correct.
You're shortening the time of the practice from two hours to, to an hour and a half?
You'll see, you, maybe. One thing that was.
You just have it up there at 3:00 to 5:00.
No, you'll see.
It's an option.
Yep.
The question is, do we extend that extra half hour that we lose up front or not?
You'll see throughout the rest of the slides that I'll include a question mark after that 5:00 or 5:15. And that's, it was brought up that we may add a later bus run. You know, why would we have that 5:30 bus run if all, if we're pushing everything back, we might have a later bus activity run? So that's, again, something that needs to be thought about. But the middle school. But the middle school, if it was left as is, could function basically just as it does right now. If they want, if you wanted to add in club time and things like that, that would be approximately what it would look like. The only slight concern that I have is if you, if you have a bunch of athletes that are not in clubs, what happens with them? Cause they are still fairly young, they need to be monitored, housed in some way, shape, or form.
So this three-fifteen, this three-fifteen is creating a tenth period in the middle school, essentially.
If that's what you wanted to do.
Start time in the, at, of, for modified of three-fifteen, as opposed to starting as they do now, creates a tenth period for the middle school.
But there's a supervision issue.
There's a supervision issue for seventh and eighth graders, correct?
This is, again, a practice day.
Practice.
We'll go practice day, game day, and various effects.
I'm sorry, I'm just gonna be a long night, I guess.
That's okay.
But why, if the time that they, they get out of school, the middle school stays the same?
Yep.
And I'm probably missing something very obvious here, but why, why do we move them from three to three-thirty?
Maybe we're not.
They bus.
Maybe we're not. The question.
That's why.
They bus. So they actually would get out on the start at two-thirty-four. They would get out at that time. They get their gear together, they meet the coach, the bus is at three, they drive over. So it's the bus time. So when we, if we would start at three-fifteen, that's when they would meet the coach, get to the bus, get on the bus, get over to practice, and they would start at three-thirty.
I think Mr. Spittle's saying, why are we even doing it at three-fifteen?
Why do you, why do you move them at all?
I was asked to do all scenarios.
The question was because of the stagger, do we need to have a staggered start time for athletics? For the high school and middle school?
This, this, all starting at the same time?
This creates, it maintains a staggered start time?
If you have.
This creates a staggered start time?
No.
For athletics?
You could start athletics either at two-thirty or three, the question was, fitting eight pounds of flour into a five-pound bag.
Right now, we start all athletics at.
Two-thirty-five.
At two-thirty-five in the middle school, goes right from school to athletics, and the high school has the tenth period. And we're, and this pushes, this keep, this makes the, everybody later?
It could make everybody later if we decided that middle schools, middle school stayed where they were, or high school. The question continues to be, clubs and extra help. That was one of the biggest concerns that students had, was clubs and extra help. And that forty minutes, that tenth period gets, if we, if we start later, squashes that time if we keep athletics at the same time that we always keep athletics. So the question was, do we, do we hard, do we make, build a hard tenth period for everybody on the high school campus and the middle school campus, rather than starting the, continue to start the high school right after close time?
Is that, I'm sorry, it's been a while since my kids were in middle school. And I forget, is that time after school utilized as much by middle schoolers as it is by high school? They, I know they have clubs before school now, but do they have nothing after?
No, they do. There's a lot of clubs in the afternoon.
Middle school, right, so.
In the middle school.
That's why we'd wanna maintain.
The middle school now, you have to make a choice between clubs and sports. You can't do both on those particular, cause you can't be on modified track team, modified volleyball.
This would give more opportunity to kids in the middle school.
You could do more things in the middle school and after school, and do athletics if you push back athletics start to three-fifteen. And the additional piece for the high school is, they get the full tenth period experience before starting athletics, as opposed to squashing that free time that they say is homework time, or downtime, or eat time prior to going to practice.
The upside is more flexibility and opportunity for the kids. The downside is, we need people to watch those kids.
In the middle school.
And there may not, right. And there may not be a club every day that every kid wants, so you're looking at revising close to eighty kids for forty-five minutes.
Or a hundred.
Or a hundred.
Depending on the season.
Okay, let's go to the next slide and see what happens.
Okay, to further complicate this, before we go on, you could pilot these, you know, we're.
Okay, so, we may have to save some of our questions.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Okay. So again, this is just practice time, fall JV and varsity. Four teams looking for turf time is typical challenge for the fall season. The one thing that's nice right now is our boys' soccer head coach is old school like me, and he doesn't mind practicing on the grass, which is nice. So he's willing to go back there pretty much at any time. But the boys' and girls' soccer team typically split a half, depending. The field hockey team does request that they're on the turf more than not because of just the nature of the sport, as well as the league that we're in. The league for field hockey is called the turf league. They do a turf league and then a grass league. So that, they typically get turf time almost every day. Volleyball, of course, is in the gym, and cross-country, of course, is around the campus at the high school. So currently on game days, so this is the game day scenario now. Currently on game days, we have practices on the turf for at least two of the teams from two-thirty to four. So if we shifted back and we weren't allowed to, we weren't able to practice until three-fifteen, we would have only turf availability from three-fifteen to four with the later start time, and then they would get pushed off. On days where football needs walkthroughs, there's very little time on the turf for most teams, and this is typically a Friday. So other teams, if their game is on Saturday, we would have practice from two-thirty to three-thirty or four o'clock, depending. But if we have a game on Friday, which we do typically have our, our two home games that are not homecoming on Friday night, you may get even less turf time if you're starting at.
And then theoretically, forty-five minutes at most.
At most.
We'd want them off by four.
Yes.
If they were starting at, if we're working with that three-fifteen number.
Correct. Winter season, this is just showing the teams and field spaces that we have currently, or that we use, so you don't know it, but you're sitting on a field right now. The middle school cafe, high school cafe gets used, high school main hallway.
I can smell it.
We have teams pretty much everywhere. Yeah, you can smell it. You can smell it.
I'm sorry.
The question is, is it wrestlers or cheerleading?
I'm gonna forget this question. I gotta go back to the previous slide.
Yeah.
What constrains that, that four o'clock end time? And is there any way to push that? The three-fifteen to four is obviously a problem. You have forty-five minutes, it's not enough for a practice. And why, why can't, the teams getting on at four, get on later, why can't that be extended? Is it an opportunity to do that?
This is game day.
If it's a game day, the game starts at four-thirty.
Is it game day for?
Somebody wants to use the turf?
No, right. So this is non-game day.
Okay.
Okay, you have later times.
So game days would be constrained to.
Game days were limited to four, cause the teams are guaranteed a certain amount of warm-up time before we can play, and the games start at four-thirty.
And game days are two or three times a week, so it's a lot.
Oh, at the, at least, at least.
It's a lot of days. It's most of the days once the season starts.
I would think so, yes.
All right. But different teams?
Yep. So we'll have one away, one will be home.
So I mean, one of the questions, or one of the possibilities is that maybe the delay is for practices, and games, you could still get on at two-thirty. I mean, that's one of the other options too, right? I mean, if, if you have a regular practices, would start at, could possibly start at three-fifteen, and rather than saying a game day, because of the crunch, they not necessarily have to start those practices, the pre-game practices at three-fifteen, they could start at the standard two-thirty-five.
The game day is for all three sports. It affects the field. So if I'm playing, if I'm on a football team.
What Joe's saying is you just go right after school, right down to the practice on those days.
Right, but all three sports, it's every, that's every day, three days a week.
What are you saying, like at least three times a week, or?
Right, but if we get different team.
But no, but all the other teams can't practice. The problem is, they can't get on the field to practice.
Well, that would, that's no different than what's happening now. That's exactly what's happening now, is if you have a team that has a game at two, and they start their practice at two, currently two-thirty, to go to four o'clock, that's what's happening right now. All I'm saying is, rather than trying to squash a forty-five minute practice prior to a game day, that, you know, cause we're not talking about, okay, on game days, we're only, these are the non-game teams.
So they'd have to move to another field for their practice after the forty-five minutes, if it was available?
What, what you're, I understand what you're saying, and basically, it's as if we were to not move the middle school time because we wanted to stay three to five. This, what you're saying is basically, we would keep it status quo unless there happens to be one day where we don't have a game on the turf. Is that correct?
I think so.
I think so too.
I think that's what I'm saying.
So, I mean, that's, that's entirely possible. It will be few and far between, but I don't see why not.
Let's move on.
Okay. So here we go. Winter season, teams and field space. This one's the really fun one. Winter. We have, this is winter modified, non-game days. So again, it's basically just a time shift. But, once we get into games, it's very complicated. So this is, this is somewhat rare, right here, what you're looking at. This will be rare, because it actually is offset by teams that are in the high school now if you push back.
Before we move on to the next slide and the four million questions that are gonna ensue, I just wanna say for the public watching, this may sound like we are really nitpicking and asking a lot of questions. Some of the critique we have heard from the public about this is that people keep saying, well, we'll work that out, we'll work that out. And as always, in any plan, the devil is in the detail. So this is one of many conversations, probably the first board conversation, where we're really looking at the details.
I hope it charts out all the options. That's, that's the goal.
Right.
Yep, you know, I was gonna save this to the end, but we did talk a little bit about the potential late fees, and because we would be getting out at two-thirty-four, we could again stay status quo there and allow our teams to depart at two-forty-five, just as they are now, which would essentially eliminate that potential issue. You know, so this is just to try to create everything, put it out there, so that decisions can be made with open eyes and knowing all the facts. So winter modified game days. When we have game days for wrestling, girls' and boys' basketball at the middle school, we currently run practices from two-forty-five to four, two-thirty to four, somewhere in that timeframe. A shift to three-fifteen would only allow about forty-five minutes of practice time. Pretty obvious there. This is only if we do not have a high school game, which we'll see in a minute. That's when it gets a little complicated. We also have our varsity cheer team that uses the middle school from four-thirty to six-thirty every day on days that they aren't in the high school cafeteria, which is typically a Tuesday. This season, it was Tuesday. So non-game days, JV and varsity. We have the girls' and boys' basketball teams split the gym in a variety of ways, depending on what their goal is for the day, between two-forty-five and seven-thirty. Mind you, the seven-thirty timeframe at the high school is currently, we do have Parks and Rec come in after that. We're not bound to that, but it is something to consider. And we have Parks and Rec come into the middle school at six-thirty. So that's why we have them currently sitting at six-thirty. So you see that girls' and boys' basketball would just be a shift. Be a little bit shorter time, about half an hour or so. Cheerleading. The mod team, which is now currently practicing in the high school main hallway, right out here, would be a little bit shorter, three-fifteen to five. The wrestling team, which is currently in the cafeteria here from two-thirty to five-fifteen, if they were to go three-fifteen to five-fifteen, we may have to do a more frequent split between wrestling and cheer to make sure that that was an equal shared opportunity for space. We try to do that. It is a challenge, but we have been very, very successful this season. The coaches are to be commended for working together with each other and moving everywhere around the campus that we have here, both throughout the middle school and high school. So here we have game days with a three-fifteen start. So currently, we're practicing between two-thirty and four o'clock in the high school prior to games. If we have wrestling, girls' or boys' basketball in the high school gymnasium, that will be the only activity in the gymnasium that day. That pushes at least one team, that's both JV and varsity, to the middle school gym for practice. If we have a wrestling match in the high school, because of the nature of rolling out the mats and prepping and all that fun stuff, we have two teams, so actually, both JV, varsity girls' and boys' moving over to the middle school for practice. So all the overflow will go over to the middle school. And this will force us on those days to have the modified teams housed, basketball teams, housed in some way, maybe a study space or something like that, in the middle school until about three-twenty, at which time they will be bussed over to the elementary school for a three-thirty to five o'clock practice. Five o'clock with a question mark, because we could shift that around. Therefore, if you, if you have gathered that all in your head there, you cannot have a JV, varsity, and mod game or wrestling on the same day. Because if we had a game in the middle school, and we had a game here, there's teams with no space. Varsity teams with no space. Here we are in the spring season. Spring modified, again, mostly just the time shift. We're all outside. They have pretty much their own space. Softball is bussed over to the elementary school lower, baseball to the town park, girls' lacrosse, town park, upper, boys' lacrosse, upper elementary school, track and field is around the high school campus. So that's where, Dave, you see the question marks there. We could, we could always change that time at the end. And varsity and JV practice days, you'll see, it would be tighter, but you could make it happen. You have, we're on the softball field, two-thirty to five-fifteen. We could always shift that back as long as it's, you know, still light out, which it should be at this season. Fall is more the one that would be a concern. Baseball field, we'll, we'll talk about in a minute what happens on a game day there. Girls' and boys' lacrosse, they split turf, variety of conditioning areas around the campus, and then the backfield. And track and field is spread out in track pit areas and the throwing areas. So on spring game days, we currently have track, girls' and boys' lacrosse practicing on the turf and on the track area from two-thirty to four o'clock. And then when we have a game at four o'clock, they all move outside of the yellow fenced area there. And even walkers will move to the outside, as we've seen, and only the game, the team with the game is on there. Varsity baseball days will use the field, varsity baseball specifically, will use a field on a game day for a short practice if JV is practice, playing. If it's the other way around, where we have a varsity game, it's just left as pristine as possible for that varsity team. So that would be a shift. They would move from a two-thirty to about a three-forty-five practice outside to, you know, either thirty minutes or, or not. And then girls' lacrosse, boys' lacrosse track, will be able to utilize the track surface area from three-fifteen to four, but they would have to move out. And JV softball, we could potentially, if we did some work on it, we could potentially utilize the fields that are back-to-back at the elementary school, the one over where the concrete steps were. You know, it would take some work, of course, but it is an option, that if we're, if we're losing time, we could bus them over to that space.
Okay.
Well, that was actually.
Could I just clarify the bullet on the last page about the spring JV and varsity game days? The second bullet says varsity baseball will use the field on JV game day from two-thirty to three-forty-five. That will be reduced or eliminated. Does that mean varsity baseball would not practice that day?
No, they would just either use the high school gymnasium, some other space somewhere, but they would not have a baseball field.
So some other space somewhere would include, so possibly the gym, and where else? That is just in your off-the-hand knowledge.
Possibly the town park even.
That's possible, but we've never done, we have not done that.
Possibly.
Town park?
I mean, currently, they do move in.
Modified at town park.
Currently, they don't stop practicing at three forty-five when, when.
Oh, no.
When JV comes out for the game.
No, so they'll go.
They go to the gym, they go to the parking lot, they clear out staff.
Hopefully not the parking lot, but yes.
But they have.
We're trying as hard as possible to avoid that. But, but they have, we have a cage in the high school. You know, it's, it's, again, it's not ideal, but there are some spaces.
I wasn't sure if it was just no practice at all. I was a little concerned about that.
No, no, no.
Brian, could I just, it looks like this has given you quite a puzzle, and you've done a lot of work on the puzzle. Could you just give us it, your overall assessment of, of the effect on our athletic program by moving it? By, by making this change?
Winter is the most affected, of course, because we're, we have to be inside. I would.
It can be done? I mean, is there going to be a negative effect on our, on our athletic program?
Well, if you have a, if you have a modified game, and any game here, we have no place for a varsity team to practice that day.
Okay, so, I guess that's, that's what I'm getting to. I, I'd just like to know what, what the real consequences are. Not just, I, I know, one of the big consequences, you having to do a ton of work here, but another one, like, like, okay, that's one. And, and how many times would that affect that team? And, and, and I just want more concrete stuff.
Sure. Okay, so, let's just talk as far as the shift. Just a game here. Maybe we, hopefully, we don't have a game there. That would occur where we have one team here, the other varsity team goes to practice at the middle school, mod teams go get housed and then move to the elementary school. That would potentially happen twenty times. You figure ten and ten home games.
Okay.
Maybe, that would probably be the max, because maybe sometimes when we had a game here, the other team would be away. It happens. But that alone, now that doesn't take into account the days that we have modified games, or wrestling match over there. Then that space is not available.
And there's, there's no other way to solve that?
I mean.
I've been figuring it out, yeah. I know you've done a ton here already, but, but in my experience, if you, and, and you, you want to.
Do you have that slide you can put up there, the winter JV-V game day slide? Because that's what we're talking about now, right?
Well, that, that we, you know, you can then isolate the big problems as you're talking about, and maybe try to solve those, because it looks like you've solved ninety-five percent of the, of the issues, aren't going to have a major, any real impact on, on the programs. And, but that five percent might be something that's serious, you know, so that's, and, and if we can isolate that five percent of, of problems for the, for the, the programs, and see if there's other solutions for them or not, and say, okay, well, you know, this is, this is, this is what the negative effect is going to be. So.
Yeah, I mean, the, the biggest question, one of the questions that falls to this, like, do these problems exist regardless if middle school starts their athletics right after school, or at three fifteen? Or they different issues? Because right now, you're, you're showing either or, but not showing them against each other? So are we counting on middle school staying the same, and high school, if high school does move back, does that alleviate any of the problems, or does that not alleviate any of the problems?
I mean, if you were to sit the slides, you know, the first two slides in each category next to each other, you could just isolate visually, you know, the middle school started two thirty-five, and the high school later, and just see what that, that might look like. There, there's always more to any of this than, than paper. You know, there's, there's actual people here.
And there's, but there's more adaptation as well. And you can't, you can't just say, oh, this is, you know.
Correct.
There, there are creative ways to solve problems.
Absolutely.
Especially when they're presented to you, and that's your big problem, right?
Sure.
So.
I mean, we can, we can solve a lot of it on paper, but it's still going to look quite a bit different when you have two teams chasing the gold ball, and they're practicing in smaller spaces and whatnot.
Even that, that fifth bullet, modified basketball teams will need to be held in a study location until three twenty. They will be bussed to the U C. That means you're moving thirty kids. You know, that takes time.
Oh, yeah. I don't want to minimize the problems at all. I just want to isolate them and see if there's creative ways to overcome them.
Though, what you were saying, David, they could theoretically be practicing at two forty-five?
No, so.
I mean, two forty-five could, well, not really.
No.
Not if we're, we're starting the other teams at three fifteen.
Correct.
And because we can't use the elementary school till the eleman-, elementary school is closed.
Exactly.
As far as their school day is over, that's why we can't transport the middle school kids over until three twenty.
Exactly, yep.
Right. Okay.
Now.
And, and just to, to, I mean, Joe thought about this with, with, when we were talking about a different plan, but are, are there, would more field space or?
Gym space.
Gym space solve some of this?
Yes.
That, that's.
In winter, right?
That's actually what I was going to mention there.
And the town park is building that indoor thing? I mean, you know, there's, there's other.
Well, in, in, over the course of time, the town will have their, their, their facility, which hopefully we'll be able to play with, because they play with ours.
Right.
Hopefully, we'll be able to play with them. That will alleviate some time, especially in that crunch time, practice time, because there's not going to be a lot of Parks and Rec stuff happening, you know, at two thirty or to five o'clock time period. So maybe, and that's a year or two away. And then, we really do have the need for expanded athletics facilities. That might be something we need to talk about.
Right.
Field as, and/or gym. So I, I think, you know, those are things that we will help alleviate this as we move forward. As far as what does it do for us next year? You know, we have challenges. One of the things we might think about is if we adopt late start, and we adopt starting later in that three fifteen time period, if we do that, we don't do that for winter. Busing, you know, the new, the new late start time wouldn't start till February anyway. And winter's almost over as far as the seasons are concerned. Maybe that type of schedule does not take effect until the, the spring sports. Just, and it's lighter later. So, you know, starting, starting Sunday, it's going to be getting dark at seven o'clock instead of six, so.
But I just want to, just caution, because I've been thinking about it, that when we do this later start time, you know, besides this, there's a lot of other inconveniences that go along in people's personal lives. And there would be almost as many by switching back. So I don't think we can sell this as a test for, for one semester. I think it's got to be, we're in, and this is what we're going to do, because switching back after people change their lives in a lot of different ways that we can't even explain here, then to go back and tell them, oh, yeah, well, now next year, we're going to switch back to the way it was. And so, I, I really think it's going to, there's the cost, and then there, then there's the cost of, of the inconvenience that we're.
Well, yeah, and again, the reason why.
The inconvenience of change.
The reason why even thinking about starting athletics at three fifteen instead of two thirty, two forty-five for the high school specifically, was students having the real issue of not having access to tenth period.
Yes.
If they have sports.
Right.
So that's why this just came up as, as an idea of, if we pushed it back, there are consequences on the other side. And that's, that's the, trying to work out what those consequences are. There's, the issue is always going to be choice. You know, right now, the middle schoolers do, do not have a choice. They either have to, they can do clubs in the afternoon, or they can do athletics. They cannot do both. Same thing with the play. They cannot be part of the play and be in athletics at the same time, because, unless they're in a different season. In the high school, we, we try so that everybody can get everything. They can get their afternoon extra help, they can get their afternoon club, they can get into a sport, and they can do the play. And then all, of course, the community service and all that stuff. So, we, we're, again, trying to fit so much, and if we do start later, and the reason, and just to remind everybody, the reason why we're thinking about starting later is the data shows that it's healthy for students, and it's, it's a good thing for students, because students' clocks are not ready for the time that they get up. So the, the question really is, where do, where do we make this, where are the sacrifices? Because there's going to be a sacrifice somewhere, and our goal is to minimize that. Which is more important? That tenth period window, that, that oxygen for students that do go right from clubs to sports, or, because that would be the fort, that we, we force them to go straight from school to sports with no break, unless we inflate that tenth period. And even if it's not forty minutes, even if we then make it a thirty-minute tenth period, that might make a difference too. Then, then that brings it from three fifteen to three. I don't know if that makes any difference either, or if that exacerbates the issue. I mean, a lot of the question becomes, when, what makes the impacts on the start of athletic time versus the start of clubs or not start of clubs? And there's just so many questions there that.
I know, as you can see by this, this, and they just, one leads to the next, and, and you can't predict, you know, all of the problems, and you can't predict all of the solutions. And, and if you want to jump in with both feet, it looks like Brian's got most of it under control. But, you know, but I, I don't think that, 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 that doing it and saying that we're going to just try it next spring, and if it doesn't work out, we're going to switch, I, I think that's, like, not something I'm interested in, in representing. I think you, either, you're either in, or you're, you're not.
The question would be, since we're, February starts in the middle of the season, we'd be starting in the middle of the winter season, so all the schedules have already been set up. We've hired all the coaches, under the agreements that we hire the coaches for, for that winter season, that then we're, if we change the time to be later, it kind of changes everything. One of the benefits of starting later on athletics is you can probably get more coaches by starting some of the athletics later than we currently do. Like, you can get elementary school teachers to coach if they're starting at three fifteen as opposed to starting at two thirty. So, I mean, that's, there's a benefit piece to that, but there's six and one.
No, I know, I know.
But how do, how, I'm just thinking logistically, how do you start something in the middle of the season that changes everything? Because the games, all the games will be scheduled, they're all set. That's all done. But for them to have this schedule prior to February first, and this schedule after February first, in the same season, would be difficult. That's the only reason I was suggesting, start in the spring, because we're starting, starting later in the middle of the season.
The pilot is.
That's the only reason.
But this isn't a pilot. This is a, a switch.
Right.
And it needs to be.
It could be tweaked for the following year, but we know what the issues are.
Right, and we, and, and I'm okay with that. I just don't want to represent it to the public that we're not going to increase, we're going to increase our transportation costs by two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. That's what we're going to do here. And we need, we can justify it by, by that benefits of the later start time, and we can also overcome all the other logistical obstacles. But I, I don't want to pretend it's just going to be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the budget this year, and then have it just continue. I, I don't, I, because it's going to continue. And once we make these changes, it's a big headache, as we can see.
I mean, the only thing I, I agree with you, David. The only thing I'm concerned about, I really think we would be able to tweak all of these problems and come up with solutions. Certainly, the town facility is going to be helpful.
I'm not.
But in the event, because we can only, and we've had a lot of people thinking, but what if, but what if, but what if? We're trying to anticipate every possible negative effect and trying to get ahead of it, which is what a good school district does. What if we didn't think of everything, and we're in that pilot?
Oh, if there's some real major, then we have to.
And then we have to sit at this meeting and say, you know what, we didn't think of that. And this isn't going to work. I mean, I certainly don't want to.
You know, other schools do it. This isn't, I mean, this is not like an impossible.
I think we can solve all the problems. The question is.
And, and on the cost side, I think we're probably, we're, we're, I think we're conservative with needing four buses. We might not really need four buses once we get things going, because you don't know.
I know.
If, if middle school kids are going to be driven in more often or not, you know, that type of thing. Because that, that's going to be a, a big mystery in there. So, not to belabor the point anymore, I think, I think, right, that there, there, there are problems or difficulties. We will have to make that decision on if, where athletics starts or not, and which is more important to students, because that's, they're the ones who came with the issue.
I know.
Of that tenth period. And I'd, Sarah, I'd love to.
Yeah, we'd love to get some student input here.
Hear your, your input on what, you know, we've been walking around in circles here.
But, you're on the phone.
So, I guess, about the presentation or the pilot idea?
Whatever you like.
Both. Okay, so, the, the presentation, I think there are a lot of questions to be answered here, like, certainly a lot of problems, but it does look like, I, I have faith that these small problems will be worked out. But regarding the pilot idea within the student body, I think it's definitely been received well. So, the fact that, like, everybody heard that maybe second semester next year, they would try it, see what problems come up. A lot of the students were more accepting of the later start time idea, and they thought, okay, I will try and change my schedule. I will try and see how it works. And instead of just opposing the idea as no, I think that the students were more in favor of just trying it out for that second semester.
Nicely open-minded. I appreciate it.
Thank you, that's great.
So, so I think opinions have moved, you know, over time, and I think we're trying to be as flexible, as flexible as we can.
Sarah, one thing, I don't want to ask you to come up with the, the answers to this now, but maybe one of the things you can do, and go back to your student government and your representatives, is what the three fifteen start time for sports? Like, what, what is the feedback to that? Because that, that was more of a vague, you know, we'd have to start later, maybe we would, maybe we not. I mean, this is Mr. Burrow doing an incredible analysis and creating the forty minutes the students wanted. But it's forty minutes later. So maybe that's the feedback. I think that's the area of discussion we'd like to hear them give us some feedback.
What's, what's kind of very important to students now that you're getting more of the information? Is that tenth period, you know, kind of sacred cow type of thing, in its forty-minute life? Maybe it doesn't need to be forty minutes.
Maybe it's a half hour.
It could be a half hour that kind of alleviates some of the pushing that stuff much later. Or would students, I mean, I know it's hard to, to ask the question, the students like sports to stay exactly as they are, because that's the easy answer? Yeah, sure, I'd love it to stay exactly as it is. But it's the benefit analysis that the students need to make, which is more important to me? Having that, that free period after school is officially over, or going straight from that and then running straight through? That, that's the biggest question, I think. Students need to kind of give us feedback on, I think.
And the feedback we got so far was that that forty-five minutes was very beneficial. Not even just for extra help, for unwinding, you know.
Well, and for food, fuel. Because some of these kids eat, I know this will be changed, but some of these kids eat lunch.
At breakfast.
At nine forty in the morning, so that by, and before they.
Not only is that changing, but we're bringing more food into our lounge area, so that there's really going to be, there'll be a lot more options. We're also, we are doing another look at the buses to see what we'll need, and we're doing another analysis to see.
Because there, there might be.
Whether there are savings there.
I just, I used to how frustrated it was at the last meeting. I just hate when, I would love us to not forget about that transportation problem. You know, in other words, like, just say, okay, well, we're going to spend an extra four buses, and that's all. I mean, I, I think that there's, there's, there's still a, a solution out there somewhere.
That's what we're doing.
That gets our kids more cost effectively back and forth.
Our bus company with Jill, Jill has been working with the bus company to do another analysis. And our bus company that we're using now, and so.
And then there needs to be another analysis with the actual ridership, like Joe said.
Yeah, right. But, but they're doing a test of the, of the ridership, and a much more detailed test.
Keeping in mind that some of Brian's solutions, or some of the solutions, exists, involve using buses. So their, their costs may be slightly higher. Like, if we keep elementary school current at two thirty, they may be done at five fifteen. But you had a lot of question marks. What if we move high school practices to five forty-five, six o'clock? Are we doing two? And, you know, and does that involve more buses?
Because now we have three after-school bus runs. We would, we'd probably get down to two loops, because you have that three thirty, which is kind of almost custom. But the main ones, four fifteen and five thirty, those would have to change. But we have to change after-school buses anyway, because any high school student that stays for clubs now, or I shouldn't say any, but many, go on the middle school bus. stays for clubs now, or I shouldn't say any, but many, go on the middle school bus. Now they have to go on a different loop, it'd be a different loop.
At 3:15, so if they're only staying until 3:15...
And there's a lot of buses running around this town with three or four kids on it after school as we've known, but we have, you know, anyway.
But we'll end up with more kids on those buses, so, you know, that's...
Right.
Because if we, right, if we do have 10th period end at 3:15 and you're not an athlete or you're not an athlete that season, you go home at 3:15.
You go home at 3:15.
So, we need a 3:15 bus.
And that's why, I was thinking, you have a 3:15 bus and that would be your launch of athletics and you'd be closing down kind of that, so your clubs and then that's your bus, that's your first bus out. So, that's just some of the thinking and we can obviously play with this.
Right.
Because we need to, there's a lot more playing to go. But it'd be very important to see how students feel about the difference in athletics later and keeping that 10th period a solid time even if it's, but it will not change the issue of away games, especially the long away games. Students will have to leave at 2:45 anyway for those away games regardless of what time of schedule we start. So, that we need to understand. You're going to, you're not going to be able to do your Tuesday club if you've got a Poughkeepsie game or anything along those lines.
Can we, I think we can wrap it up, right?
I think we should and it's time to talk about the calendar, so let's move on.
I just want to say something, just one thing. So, we've had an outside consulting group come in and look at what they think the solutions could be to the routing and all of that and came up with the four buses. So, what Dr. Wills was talking about is asking the bus company now that currently does the bus runs and have been doing them for a year to, over, a little over a year, to look at it as well, not, not to hire them as a consultant, but to look at the ridership. I know we talked about this a million times and we've gone over it and there's all these other things going on. So, I, you know, I'm going to get together, Pat and I will get together with him and talk to him about that. So, the conversation isn't over as far as money is concerned either, you know, all of these other things like you said.
They can charge us as a project rather than per, they can make, maybe they can make some accommodations or some suggestions to get that number down.
Yeah, possibly, and I mean, he's, I mean, they're our contractor, they want to work with us, they want to make it work, they want to make it happen for us if that's what we want to happen. But an observation overall for me in this is still hearing Brian speak about the sports program and the integrity of the sports program is space. I mean, I think we're still looking at, all of this is a struggle to put in space and where the kids practice and how much time they get to practice and on what days and it just, it seems very much, you know, oriented around the space that we lack for them to have the program that you'd like them to have.
Right, and we've had these discussions about the need to look at our debt payments and so on over the next few years. We also are going to find that we are short of science labs. We want to make smaller classes, but we're short of science labs too at our high school. And, you know, with the increase in our science programming, that's another area that we need to look at. So, I think as we look at our facilities projects, that's something...
Gym space, field space.
Yeah.
That's what we can do.
And science labs.
Let's, let's absorb, let's absorb. And I can't, on behalf of all of us, thank you, Brian.
And I just want to tell Brian, say thank you for all your work on that.
Yes, thank you.
I can't thank you enough.
You're welcome.
Good job.
Okay, now comes our favorite conversation. I'm not even saying a word, whatever you all decide, I'm going to just say okay.
Fran would go on and on and on about this.
Calendar conversation.
Oh, it's going to be easy this year.
Okay.
Isn't it?
Say that again, just say, I want to hear it, I want to believe it. I think so too.
Aye.
Yeah, aye.
This is basically a calendar we've seen before. We're waiting for BOSI's to adopt. They adopted, the only difference between this calendar and the BOSI's calendar is looking at February, February break, can I move that up a little bit?
It's down at the bottom.
Yes. Is the February break where BOSI's has three days, we're looking at just two days because we wanted to add in the 20, the 29th of March is Thursday, which is a day that our CSEA contract requires. And if we did not have that day, which we usually do, it's usually included in the week we have off, but if we don't have that day, we have to find another day and it becomes very awkward to solve that problem with the CSEA contract, so...
Dr. Wills, the Wednes, I bring it up every year because it didn't happen until after my son was out of school, but the Wednesday before Thanksgiving seems to have become like a locked in stone day off and it wasn't, and it isn't in the BOSI's calendar.
It is in the BOSI's.
It is?
Yes.
Okay.
Because, and basically that is saying, what that is saying is that the majority of the schools...
Are doing it now.
Have that.
Right, it's not in Rockland, so that's why I got confused, but, okay.
Okay, so that's it.
All right.
Wait, one more question, just one, fast, and this has nothing to do with the kids. Superintendent's conference, I'm talking as behalf of the staff, the Friday before Labor Day, any, in the past, it's been the Wednesday or Thursday to allow people that Labor Day weekend. Any reason?
I asked the association about that and they preferred to have it on the Friday. No, I offered, I offered that.
Okey dokey.
And when we discuss prior to the start of next year, we will, if we look, if we're looking at early dismissals, we'll try to block them in the calendar by September, so I'd like to wait until we formulate next year's professional development schedule.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
All righty.
I said nothing.
Do you want to say something?
I know, I'm just telling you, I said nothing.
Okay.
Wanted to be noted, there goes that.
Okay, Sarah, take it away. Would you like to take this report?
So, the music department has been very busy lately with the Great Works Concert, a trip to Broadway and the Spring Musical. On March 1st, the school chorus groups, the Wind Ensemble, worked together to perform the lengthy piece, Carmina Barana. They were accompanied by teachers including Mr. Ignatz, Mrs. Bennett, Mrs. Kraus, and a children's choir from the middle school as well as a soloist, Mr. Kron. Their groups were under the direction of Mr. Odell and Dr. Messera. Everyone worked immensely hard to prepare for the concert and their hard work was quite obviously seen in their beautiful performance, so congratulations to all who participated and performed. Last Sunday, the stage crew and temperamentals traveled to New York City to see the first a cappella show on Broadway entitled In Transit and from what I heard, everyone loved the show and was very appreciative of the trip. The Spring Musical, Billy Elliot, is coming out very soon. The stage crew and actors have been very busy lately staying late at the school for rehearsal. The musical is set in the 1984 UK miners' strike and centers on the character of an 11-year-old boy, his love for dance and his hope to become a professional ballet dancer. The main character, Billy Elliot, is played by James Capizito. Tickets go on sale starting March 10th and the show will be performed from March 31st to April 20, April 2nd. Everyone is very excited to see this musical, so get your tickets soon. The Authentic Science Research Class had a super successful weekend. The juniors and seniors in the program, who all conducted their own original research, competed in their first competition on Saturday. They went to the Westchester Science and Engineering Fair and won a bunch of awards. Out of the 11 students who competed, eight of them won awards. Jasper Casban won the Intel Excellence in Computer Science Award and third place overall in computer science. Erin Pedersen won the third place overall in Behavioral Group Two. Paige Lee and Salvador Pepe won third place overall in Behavioral Group One. Mariana Silva won the Walter Kast Memorial Award in Excellence in Behavioral Research. Jessica Pierce won the Excellence in Medical Research Award. Haley Lewis won the Stockholm Junior Water Prize and Wayne De Rosa won the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Admiration Award. So, given that it was, this was the first competition in Putnam Valley Science Research history, we did amazingly well, so congratulations to all. In addition to competing last weekend, the science research students also went on a field trip to the Junior Science and Humanities Symposium in the University of Albany this Tuesday. Although they were not competing, they got the opportunity to view some amazing research presentations and learned how they could improve upon their own presentations. They plan on competing and hopefully winning this competition next year. On another note, the Harlem Wizards game is occurring right now. The Putnam Valley High School staff is playing a game against the Harlem Wizards and students have been very excited about the event and tickets were even sold out. So, I hope to report more about the success of this event next meeting. And then, in the past couple of weeks, two of our sports teams went to states. We sent the wrestlers a couple of weeks ago and cheerleaders just this past weekend. Konstantin George and Jared Eliopoulos placed fifth in their divisions and Kyle Sams placed sixth in his division. The cheerleaders were also very successful as they placed second in overall in all of New York State. A huge congratulations to all of our athletes. And finally, a couple of seniors had the honor of being able to display some of their art at the Katona Museum of Art. Daphne Adams, Matthew Jenkins, Christopher Crawford, Ryan Usai, Ben Donnelly, Caleb Cabelli, and Caitlin Meliker all had art displayed at the exhibit which just closed March 5th. So, congratulations to all of our students.
That was so thorough. You took, everything went. No, I'm so glad, I'm so happy to hear these reports. I was very pleased to be able to see the work at the Katona Museum last Saturday and to be at the Science Research Event, at least for the last part, because the first part of the evening, I was at the Foundation Event and I would like to put a plug in for the Foundation Event for the community and get more people interested in coming because it really is, it's a wonderful community celebration of the schools and, you know, it's a way to, to come together in a different kind of a venue and to enjoy each other's company and see our teachers in, you know, in a different setting. And this year, in every one of the grade levels brought a, an article to be auctioned off and we also had high school teachers with their, in fact, I was bidding on the beautiful cheese board that Mr. Louviqi made. I had to leave to go to the Science Research, so I couldn't come back and add because it was really, was heavily favored. So, yes, the Foundation is a great opportunity, the Science Research, just seeing the hundreds of students, I think there were 500 students from all over the region.
550?
Right, 550 students all over the region and in that crowded gym and to see our students there for the first time and what they were able to see in terms of what others are doing and how they fit into that and how they can excel, it's a very exciting experience for them. Also, I wanted to note that the elementary school show, I got you on that one.
She had a lot in the high school this time around.
Yeah, Seussical. And I saw it today at 4:30. It was delightful. I hope the community will try to get tickets and to see it the next couple of days. I know that if there is a snow day tomorrow, they're going to have an extra performance on Saturday at 2:00 and it is really so sweet and I love the way they switch parts and the teachers do an incredible job with that. Chrissy and Ms. Kron and Maddie Calhoun, they do a beautiful job with that show. Also, I wanted to mention that on March 17th, next Friday, we will have an early dismissal and we are, we have a full program for our teachers. We have the Innovative Designs in Education, they will be coming to us, consultants, to talk about the program which we've started at the middle school this year. And in fact, at our next board meeting, just before our next board meeting, there's going to be a presentation of some of the work done by the middle school on the bridges that they have built, the designs they have for...
I can't wait to see those, I live there.
Yeah, for that, Overpass.
Can I vote on it?
Putty's Peak, Overpass. And of course, we had architects working with them. So, these are to scale models, they use their math, they use their science. There's going to be a wonderful opportunity for the community to see their work before the next board meeting and I hope, I hope people will, will come to see that. We're also inviting the town and the DOT to see if they'll come.
Jeez, that didn't even take 10 or 12 years, it's wonderful.
So, on that Friday...
Have you seen any shovel set?
Excellent.
So, on that Friday, the IDE program, which really sponsored the process, the teachers use that process to develop these projects, they'll be there on that, the 17th. But also, we're going to have several circles of learning and sharing to provide information and dialogue on ways to continue our efforts to empower all students in a safe environment that respects and appreciates different voices and perspectives. So, we're going to have seven different workshops, which teachers and community members, they were invited also to join us and there are community members who are coming. And the seven workshops, one is the Community Circle and the Dialogue, the next is Digital Citizenship, Operation Respect, Teaching English Language Learners, Instructional Strategies for Promoting Students as Problem Solvers, which is Ed Mazur's work, the Dignity for All Students Act and Facing History, which is a program for applying historical context to current issues. We have our own staff doing some of the facilitating of these and so we think it's going to be a really powerful day in our, for our staff members and for community members who will be joining us. And we hope that we'll get some board members as well to join us. We also sent out today the letter to our community inviting community members to participate in interviews for the Assistant Principal at the middle school and for the Director of Learning position. And they will start the week after next, the week of the 20th, we'll be starting the screening interviews. And we have an enormous number of resumes, some very, very solid resumes for these positions and very excited about the possibilities. Thank you.
Dr. Wills, if there is, if we do get the morning connect ed call about, sorry, will that information about Seussical be added to at that time?
Yes, yes, Jeannie has the information already and we will, I usually work with Jeannie on these, Jeannie sort of drafts something and we work on it together in the morning and we have it already.
So, we make that one together, okay, great. And I did in it, we went right from student to superintendent, is there any PTA, PTSA representative? Okay, now I'd like to open it up to public contribution on any of today's agenda items. And now, let's move into new business. Mr. Ferrero, start us off with number one.
Resolved on the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to approve and amend legal notice for the budget hearing, budget vote, election and energy performance contract proposition. As per document number 170/17, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Resolved upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the 2017-18 School District Calendar as per document number 173/17, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
Resolved on recommendation of Superintendent of Schools that the Board appoints Amy Mazzella to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant commencing on March 13th, 2017 and terminating on March 13th, 2021 in the teaching assistant tenure area at an annual compensation in the amount of $26,000, step one of the CSEA salary schedule prorated in accordance with PVCSD policy number 9250. Ms. Mazzella holds teaching assistant level one certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Resolved on recommendation of Superintendent of Schools that the Board appoints Nancy Christopher to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant commencing on March 13th, 2017 and terminating on March 13th, 2021 in the teaching assistant tenure area at the annual compensation of amount of $32,800, step 11 of the CSEA salary schedule prorated and in accordance with the Putnam Valley Central School District Policy 9250. Ms. Christopher holds teaching assistant level one certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Resolved on the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to approve the agreement with Putnam County to provide real estate tax services for calendar year 2017-18 as per document number 178/17 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting on file in the district office.
Second.
Questions or comments?
What this is basically saying is that the county gives us the tax rules for Putnam Valley.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number six.
Whereas Foundation Aid was established in 2007 in order to help provide a sound, basic education to all students and whereas the Foundation Aid formula has not been fully funded since 2009 and whereas the New York State, whereas New York State is underfunding Foundation Aid by... and whereas the New York State, whereas New York State is underfunding Foundation Aid by more than $4 billion, and whereas school districts have been left without school funding system that accurately reflects changes in enrollment, student need, and district wealth, and whereas such a proposal would make permanent the underfunding of Foundation Aid that impacts hundreds of districts statewide, and whereas school districts deserve a funding system that provides adequacy, equity, flexibility, predictability, and clarity, therefore be it resolved that the Putnam Valley Central School District Board of Education calls on the State Assembly and State Senate to reject the proposed repeal of the Foundation Aid formula and instead commit to full funding of the formula over the next three years.
Second.
Sorry.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven.
It resolved that the board hereby terminates the employment of school monitor Allison Montgomery effective close of business on March 10th, 2017, as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Number one.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda items two through 12 as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're appointing the winter team coaches who had extra seasonal work for boys' basketball, wrestling, and cheerleading, girls' basketball. We're putting in pay for them for the additional hours. We have a health and welfare contract with the White Plains and Eastchester School Districts for two students who attend non-public schools in those districts, and those school districts supply the health services for these students. We're approving an overnight trip for the cheerleaders and the gymnastic team to participate in tournaments, which you heard about earlier. We're approving three teachers to administer the World Language Speaking Examination to approximately 104 students. We're approving the disposal of 125 outdated textbooks, which we tried to sell but could not. We're approving the Nature Explorer Club. It's a new club at the elementary school and its advisor. We're approving two staff members providing staff development for our teachers for therapeutic crisis intervention. We're approving independent educational evaluation for one student who has a medical issue. We're approving additional hours for part-time nurse so she can accompany students whose medical condition requires a nurse on overnight trips. We're approving additional spring coaches for the head boys JV lacrosse team and for the varsity boys lacrosse team. And we're thanking Ms. Albano for being a volunteer for the girls' modified lacrosse program at no stipend. We're approving additions to the substitute tutelist.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Now I'd like to open it up to public comment on any topic that's of interest.
I'll just make it quick. Dr. Wills and myself attended a meeting last week with our assembly representative for the 94th District, Mr. Kevin Burns. And we, we, along with people from Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's, from the Carmel School District, from the Brewster School District, and Judy Weiner from the Putnam Northern Westchester School Boards Association, tried to educate them about the importance of education, about Foundation Aid. We did talk a little bit about possibly merging and sharing services more if possible, and we talked how we, that was always looked at and how it failed before in the past. We looked at a whole bunch of issues about the impact of Indian Point on Henry Hutchins School Districts. We looked at the tribal laws. We looked at APPR. We looked at BOSI's. We talked about a whole different thing. The thing that was important, though, we were educating him to education and our needs for our students.
Anything else from anybody on the board?
I just.
Actually, I would like to ask Natalie attended a very important meeting. Robert Tendi, the district attorney, I'm sorry, the Putnam County Attorney. Maybe you could just say a few words.
Sure, it was about, you know, drug involvement and resources in our community and all throughout Putnam County. It was a great discussion, a lot of shared resources that are available and that we believe should be available, advocating for those services, and just really starting to form a group of stakeholders, whether, school districts, Garrison was there, Carmel, Brewster, all of us were represented, along with the Sheriff's Department, and really trying to address the increase in numbers of students who are overdosing, who are using and abusing prescription drugs and illegal substances. So really, it was just the first meeting, but I think it really was a kickoff to a consistent group of people who will continue to look at resources and bringing those into our schools. And prevention, a lot of prevention work. So it was, it was a great opportunity. And I'm hoping, I'm going to follow up with Eva Wayne for our school district. And we have two contacts that we really are interested in bringing into the school to do even more prevention, and especially with families, working specifically with, with families that need the services. So that's it. Any other questions?
I had, to some institutional knowledge, Guy and Ralph might know the answers to this. When the high school started, the decision to not have an orchestra, I'm just wondering if you had any memory of the reasoning behind that, or was it we were too young to start one? That type of thing, going with strings in addition to everything else. Just never.
I don't remember any reason.
I think it was a cost issue, Joe.
Cost.
Because they would have to start at the elementary school, bring it out.
And, and purchasing all the instruments, but.
Well, the big instruments we purchased, right? I mean, most, I mean.
But even the small ones to start possibly. It was just talked about, and, and it could have been also the preference, you know, of just the quote-unquote band instruments versus the orchestra instruments. But it's something to talk, we can still talk about it to our music departments, and they might be ready for it now.
And that's something, I think, when we're talking about space, that if we're going to have that discussion, we should talk about the space for that.
Absolutely. We, we have it in the school district. I work in, and kids practice in hallways.
Exactly.
In little corners, it's.
You know, I hadn't thought about it in a while until, went to Carmina Barana, which was fantastic. But there were, you could tell there were parts that, that were supposed to be strings, and they were flutes or clarinets, and it wasn't the same. But they did a fantastic job. But, so that what triggered my thinking of what the history was, but that's all.
You have a better ear than I have for that stuff. It's good.
Anybody else on the board? Okay, so at this point then, I'd like a resolution to convene an executive session for one manner of the employment history of one particular person, one manner of collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, the Taylor Law, and one matter made exempt under federal law the Family Educational Rights Act, Rights and Privacy Act. After the executive session, no further business will be conducted.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.